You're live. Can you turn off the audio on the laptop, please? The sound and all that as well?
Is that better?
Yes, it should be good to go now.
Thank you.
All set?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order, please. What is the purpose of the meeting?
By the wishes through the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, for sure, we have is the adoption of the agenda and the changes. We are going to, we're gonna move number six, the redistricting. Excuse me. Phone's ringing at the worst time. We're gonna move number six, redistricting, to after the public hearings, just to allow the applicant at the public hearing to not have to listen to us talking about redistricting. Any other changes?
Motion approved as modified.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Appreciation and appearances, there aren't any, so do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved, seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is no new business. No department director, constitutional officer, county attorney report.
Wherever you district a report.
Good. County administrators report.
Nothing to report, sir.
All right, is there any board comment? Okay, we're just sailing right along here. Informational items, you have a couple of items there. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have any appointments?
I would be asking to put Alicia on the Skyline cap board. I would support that, I would move for that.
And I would like to appoint Sarah Lupo to the Barbersville Village Overlake District Advisory Committee.
I'd like to reappoint Jack Rickett, EDA, and Jeff Holmer for the county advisory.
And Allison, we haven't heard from Bob McCall, we have?
No, staff has reached out to him, we have not heard back.
Okay.
The last remaining one on the memo, it's the board's end, the rest of this, Jeff Earnhardt, as the reappointment to Parks and Rec Board of Directors.
I would nominate him for the Parks and Rec Foundation.
Any other nominations?
Have you reached out to Stacy Burleson yet, please?
Yes, Tim has reached out to Stacy Burleson and Sean Gregg. We just haven't heard back from them, yeah.
All right. All in favor of those nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Of both? They are all duly nominated. All right, calendar item, consideration to schedule a public hearing for ZTA 21-02, amendment to accessory apartment on Tuesday, October 26. Do you have any problem with that? Okay, all we need on that is a consensus, correct?
Correct.
All right, so that brings us to our public hearings. S U P 21-02, the board supervisors will consider a special use permit application from Christopher and Marie Gorman to allow the keeping of horses on property located at 9292 Little Skyline Drive. Property is identified as tax map parcel 2873. It contains 5.989 acres and is zoned residential. Property is situated in the agricultural A1 recommended future land use category as described in the Orange County Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone from staff who's going to speak to this, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just to put up some visuals to walk through, which you already had in your packet, if you have anything you just want to ask about. Mr. Johnson's already introduced this. And just a reminder, we do have in Zoom here Mr. and Mrs. Gorman, so at your perfect time, we'll have a handoff to them. This is the future land use map, as you can see, everything in this area has the green on it, which is the agricultural one designation. The slightly different yellow color is just to show the subject property in the center of the map. The next map is the zoning map, and you'll see this is not as monolithic as the green agricultural one. Here we have properties that are zoned R2, which is, properties which are zoned R2, which includes the subject property, properties which are agricultural A1 around it. And not too distant down the lane, we have properties zoned R1, which is limited residential. Just a couple photographs taken of the property. You can see a long Little Skyline Drive and Frederick off to the west northwest, or excuse me, the southern southwestern boundary, where the four board fence runs along the property currently. And then lastly, the concept plan that you have in your report shows a couple of features on the property. In purple, we have the existing buildings, that's the existing house and the outbuilding. The orange line shows the board fence, where the photographs just were. And there's a dashed black line that shows where the four board fence would be extended to complete the land, basically, to secure it for the horses. Staff recommended to the commission approval with conditions, and the planning commission recommends to you approval with conditions. Those are items one, two, three, and four, the typical ones related to permitting the use. And it's controlling documents, and then four A and B are really the controlling conditions. And these are that there not be more than three horses kept on the property, and there was evidence I introduced in your days about kind of the carrying capacity of land. And a number of acres per horse that we received from Virginia Tech for our extension service. And then four B, that the existing fencing shall be replicated, installed, maintained, and extended, as generally shown in the plan I just put forward. Those are the counter reintroduction and what you had in your report. Does anyone have any questions on that, or something you have to answer that?
Okay, any questions for Josh? Thank you, Josh. So at this time, the applicant would like to speak.
Thank you, Josh, for presenting that. I mean, we're basically here to answer any questions. We've made significant material improvements to the property, you know, inside and outside, and, you know, thank you for your consideration for the special use permit.
Any questions for Gorman?
Yes, I do have one question. Do you plan to create either a stable or a run-in shed or some type of shelter as part of this? I didn't see anything specifically about that in the application. It really is just a question, it's not necessarily materially, but it's, if this were ag property, you could do that by right. I just don't want to run into a little bit of a conflict, given that it's R2 property, and you decide you need a little run-in shed or something. We should be aware of that now, so that we can recognize that as part of the plan, if it needed is.
Yeah, thank you, good question.
Yes, sir, we, good evening, gentlemen. In the last meeting, that was addressed, because he was worried about the same thing, that that might come up further down the line. And it was established that if we did do a run-in shed, even with the zoning, the way the building permits go, that it would, it would be fine. At some point, we might do a run-in shed, maybe just enough for two horses between the fences. As of now, there's no plan, sort of, build a barn or a bigger structure. But regardless, it was addressed in the previous meeting. We spent some time on that to make sure it was okay.
So for Josh, that means you, they can't have the run-in shed based upon the current zoning?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
It's an accessory section.
All right, any other questions for the Gormans? All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing that, I would move, a little unusual, but the chair will move that we accept this. It's next second.
We need to get over to public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do, we need to open the hearing, all right.
I don't have anyone here to sign up to speak, sorry. We did receive one written comment late yesterday afternoon from Jean Johnson, who received an adjoining property notification, and it simply just says that she's in support of approving this request.
Okay.
And those are the only comments.
And I want to sign up here this evening.
No, sir.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing, and again, I'll make my motion.
I'll just say.
All right, so it's been moved a second, and any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Crozier is absent, Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frain?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Marshall.
Okay, the motion passes 4-0. Good luck to the Gormans.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, it's now time for a public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Let me, we went through this meeting so quickly, that, let me circle back to our comment for a moment here. You have in front of you a memo prepared by staff relative to the, to Wilderness Crossing. It is a, well, I tell you what, Josh, why don't you come up and tell us what, we just got this late this afternoon, so I'd like Josh to kind of tell us what it is. I did ask that staff prepare something of this nature, because I was concerned that the Wilderness Crossing application is maybe lagging a little bit with some of our processes. This is the first time that we've ever dealt with something like this before, and I just want to kind of get everybody on the same page here, and make sure that we get it right, and that it keeps moving forward, and that there isn't any more mass confusion than absolutely necessary. So Josh, could you kind of walk us through this memo that you put together?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, as difficult as it is, with the bottom line up front, I think I will start with the bottom line up front. So the staff does recommend that there be an initial work session on this subject on the case, because there are items that are inconsistent with the GWAP, or at least unclear in their implementation through the proper conditions that have been proposed. So the majority of the documents that you have here, just kind of walk us through. First, in the background, as you all know, there are 20 parcels that make up the application, totaling 2,618 and a half acres, currently with a mix of zoning classifications on them, agricultural, general industrial, I2, living and industrial, R1, general commercial, C2. The proposal is to go to planned development mixed use, known as PEM. They're located in SubArea 4, which is called Wilderness Run, planning area of the Germania Wilderness Area. The application was reviewed by the Orange County Application Review Committee, ARC, was presented by the applicant to the invited public in June at a town hall, applicant-led town hall, with about 70 persons in attendance, and briefed with staff to the planning commission in a work session about what we can have to give. Staff was also asked to make a list of items comparing the rezoning application, general development plan, or generalized development, GEP, design guidelines, also known as the pattern book, and proper conditions to the Germania Wilderness Area Plan. So the discussion section of this memo goes through that. The plan itself, as you know, is 60 pages, the pattern book is 60 pages, so there's a lot of volume and content in places where these connect and have an access, and there are also places where it's just not applicable to this particular area of the world, or those particular conditions may not be something that is controlled or addressed through zoning. So I've selected out where I think is a good frame of reference to talk about what is before you and what may remain to be resolved. So just a reminder, the GWAP was adopted by the board in 2015 after a planning effort focusing on the county's primary development area. This is fundamental and, you know, basic. We all know this, the plan was formulated to be deliberate, public, transparent, and reflective of the desires and needs of the county for the area. The adoption of the plan followed a vision initiative involving board supervisors, the planning commission, and economic development authority that began about two years before that. The bodies jointly developed and adopted distinctive themes as part of the vision for GWAP, including the one that was chosen in the adopted plan to kind of reflect the essence of the vision. A place to live, work, and play with a higher standard of design and development, which is self-contained, which is a self-contained, complete community that is appealing to current and prospective residents, is a place clearly differentiated from other places, and be a dynamic destination that results in an economic engine for the entire county. So that's the vision for Germania Wilderness Area. Vision is hinged on four key considerations for looking at plan implementation by the county, which would be master plans, as well as by others, which would be developed in master plans. So the vision of this plan is hinged on those four key considerations. Promoting connectivity, number one. Number two, providing ample conservation area at open space. Number three, setting standards and expectations for attractive and harmonious development. And number four, encouraging and supporting economic growth and development. Goes further to clarify that it's intended to present a sustainable balance between these key considerations, and also recognizes the character of existing communities within the overall Germania Wilderness Area. They don't have as much undeveloped areas in SubArea 4. For example, SubArea 7 and 8 have a lot more existing character that would not be changed, whereas Area 4 is an area of more intended growth. I skipped ahead to the section about certain milestones that are expected to be reached to implement the plan. These include drafting individual master plans for transportation, infrastructure, historical and cultural resources, drafting zoning ordinance, and so many ordinance amendments to implement the land use goals, and implementation of the economic development branding and marketing strategy. The timely expansion of infrastructure, while not an individual milestone, will represent a successful ongoing implementation of the plan. And then talks about periodic review, both necessary and required for sustained success, as well as ensuring the county continues to meet set goals and objectives. So the next step is implementation milestones to date 2021. And just to go through those, transportation master plan, do not have. Infrastructure master plan, do not have. Historical cultural resources master plan, do not have. Zoning ordinance amendments, item D, yes, three new zoning districts were created as a period between 2015 and 2018. Those are the planned development business, planned development mixed use, and planned development traditional design districts, so PDB, PEM, and R5. I spoke to the board at work session, just kind of going through the implementation through these districts to be mapped, specifically in the Germania Wilderness Area, a few months ago. Also, the subdivision ordinance was amended in the 2018 time period, and some of those provisions relate to interconnectivity and other layout standards consistent with the GWAP considerations. Economic development branding strategy, I would consider ongoing, as would be all, and that's less established through legislation and more through ongoing efforts.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Just so I'm clear, your items A, B, and C, the transportation, master plan, and so forth, there you're referring to the GWAP generally, not a specific application, I take it, correct?
Correct. So Mr. White, in the GWAP, there were certain implementation milestones that were called out. One was a transportation master plan, so it would be done by essentially the public, whether that's the county and the state together, a transportation master plan. So that would be an implementation milestone of the plan. So then we evaluate the application for R E C 21-02 Wilderness Crossing for consistency with the plan compared to the four key considerations about promoting, you know, the 1, 2, 3, 4 I read earlier, connectivity, promoting connectivity, I don't want to miss that, promoting connectivity, ample conservation in open space, standards and expectations for attractive and harmonious development, encouraging and supporting economic growth and development. And then the specific future area, excuse me, future land use plans for SubArea 4, where these properties, these 20 parcels are located. So then what I did was go through the policy statements in the GWAP, and there's an open checkbox, so staff comments are in blue. The original text from the plan is italicized, and then checkboxes are open or checked where I feel that the item has been satisfied or remains to be resolved through proper conditions or plan components. So in SubArea 4, specifically land uses and zoning, there are five items. It's hard to hit the high level on all of these, but basically capitalizing on the extensive amount of natural constraints to create opportunities for recreational use areas in open space. These particular 2,618 and a half acres have a lot of streams, live streams, as well as intermittent, rolling hills, topography, and the, as we know, it's downstream of water impounded at Lake Woods, and so there's a dam breach in a stationary as well. The idea was to establish flexible zoning techniques, which again, has been done, and apply for through this application for a planned development mixed use district. Number three, utilize the Route 3 corridor district. There is no specific overlay districts, although that was another objective of the plan. To limit access points along the highway in order to encourage and guide planned development along a new roadway within the transportation corridor preservation area. We briefed that when we looked at kind of that overlay map, where the transportation improvements, the reservoir, and some of the cultural and historical resources are overlaid, within the transportation corridor preservation area. And then it talks about, the district will be used to maintain the integrity of Germania Highway Route 3 as an integral transportation corridor. Coordinating future development with a provision of adequate public facilities and services, and planning for impacts and the necessity of reserving and/or acquiring property for these facilities within the subareas, so these are public facilities and services. And the fifth, land use policy statement, which guides these future conditions. And in the plan, I will say that it's actually the other way around. The policy statements follow the conditions, so first, the dream state was set, and then the policies were kind of put in place to be the method of getting to that end state and fit to your conditions. I thought it was more helpful to start with the policies which were established, and then the detail. And then the last is just to ensure that the property within the planned developments and other areas is appropriately allocated among a mix of uses, such that there is adequate residential, commercial, industrial, recreational, and institutional property to promote a sustainable, attractive, and harmonious community. I would again relate that back to goal number one, that things be interconnected. So just going down the checklist for housing, clustered residential along with open space. There is residential development that is somewhat clustered along the ridges. In my opinion, the residential development around the environmentally constrained areas is not consistently clustered, and it varies in type. So it creates some residential routes to serve disconnected and isolated development areas. It's an opportunity for improvement. The mixed use, mixed density housing, attached and detached, is provided in conjunction with commercial uses. And their plan does have these uses, however they're separated, and sometimes distant from commercial uses, and we can talk to that in some greater detail. The best way to look at this is in the pattern book, where it is an illustrated plan in great detail. And you'll see that the apartments and the townhouses, in some cases are close to the mixed use area, and other cases are separated, and frankly, a long walk or a walk across a parkway to get to them.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
I'll take you back a little bit here.
Sure.
You've got, you said checkboxes are open when the staff's saying the proposal is not expected to fulfill this condition. What you mean is, as written, the proposal, you don't feel fills that condition?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. And so, when you say the proposal is expected, you're saying that as written, it does address these. So the blank boxes are areas that you're suggesting need to be perhaps looked at?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Under how?
Let me, let me interrupt you. Let me ask the board, do we, do we, do we want, I think we kind of have an idea of what Josh has put together here. Do we want him to go through all of this, or do we want to wait and study this on our own, and then try to come back at our next meeting and deal with this?
I think we need to study it, but as I'm looking at what the planning commission has done, there's a lot of work to be done. And that was the, that was, you know, I'm not sure that there, that there's anything that I'm particularly opposed to, or violent disagreement on, but there's a lot of things not defined, and that should be. And there's, and some of the things that we've got in our comp plan, or the GWAP plan, you know, we really think those are important, and should they be incorporated? And that, I think, is some of the policy issue. I was just looking at one, when they said, well, we don't have any, the plan doesn't show any reservoirs. The two reservoirs that are in that area are like 29-day supply. We're not going to put those there. There's a couple of other options, there's like three other options for reservoirs, which are 100 or 200-day supplies. So these things are just too small. We put them in there because it was listed as one of the things in the water supply plan. But, you know, so the fact that those aren't there doesn't bother me at all.
To turn, taking off where you were talking about, Lee, I agree that there's some open-ended questions that need to be addressed at this point, and, you know, that includes the ones that the board needs to address. It seems to me that, I have a question, is, maybe you know the answer to this about the ARC. Is the ARC going to have some collaborative work sessions with staff, maybe even the planning commission, as well as the applicant? My understanding, the applicant was not included in any of the two ARC so far.
That's correct, they were not at the two ARC's.
And so, what A piece that's missing is sort of that discussion and work session, if you will, with the applicant, as well as others at the table, to work through some of these things. I don't think you can get closure absent that. Now, the ARC potentially could do that. If not, I think we end up needing to do it as a board. That's more of a process question, but it needs to get to some of the things you're talking about. Do we really want the little reservoirs, or do we want to reserve a place for a larger reservoir to the point of, maybe one of the things that we will insist on is that that area be set aside and protected, or the county has a 20-year option on it for a dollar? I don't know where we go with it.
Yeah, that's a part of it. I mean, for instance, RSA said, yeah, we're going to provide more water. And in fact, they're moving ahead with the improvements to the water purification plant to do that. But there's going to have to be pipes and tanks and things like that, all pretty technical design issues. How big is the pipe from here to here, how much of a size tank, and where's the tank located? I'm not sure that those have to occur at this stage, they're probably more in the site plan stage. But there's, the policy is, you know, do you want an upper, a full fall tank? Or do you want ground-level tanks with pumps and diesels? You know, there's just, there's a variety of those kinds of things. But I think there's enough of these that are at the ARC level, and at the policy level, that I would think that needs to be discussed with the applicant there.
Yeah, another example is transportation. I think the GWAP, the whole notion was to get as much of the traffic, local traffic, off of three, into the parkway area and the internal roads. And so the question is, does the transportation plan that's being put forth, does it accomplish that? And so the question is, does the transportation plan that's being put forth, does it accomplish that?
And, and when you talk about the parkway in there, is that where the, the businesses are going to be? Are they going to try to be on Route Three? And that's, that's, uh, that's a policy decision. I think that's, it's pretty important.
Well, I think, I think the question I have is, do, is it time now for, and let me just say, this board to begin, uh, operating as a, as a board, as a whole board in work sessions with the, with staff and with the applicant? Or does the A R C need to take it a couple more steps first? And that's the question I don't...
I guess, I guess, given what the planning commission is doing, I think they're taking on many of these things at their level. And I think maybe we ought to be looking at these i- in terms of, of what we consider a policy as, as a, as a board here. And making sure that if we think that this particular aspect is important, that we feed that to the planning commission so they can work through this.
So do we need a work session just among us to, with staff to sort of figure out what those...
I think, I think answering some of these kinds of questions here are probably, is probably good for, for a board session.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, there, there are enough moving pieces that we've, somehow we've got to put them together in a process that, you know...
This, I mean, this is so, uh, so different in terms of order of magnitude to what we've done before that our standard, you know, give to the planning commission, they work a little bit, then we get, you know, it's, I don't think we're going to work. I think we're going to need some policy driven down, uh, and the planning commission working. I mean, I'm listening to, uh, or I'm reading the, the, what the planning commission is doing. And I think, uh, they've got a good sense of there's a lot to do. But I think at some point, uh, some of these items, we ought to give them a guidance.
Josh, is the, uh, is the planning commission, have they sent their work session or is that still up in the air?
No, so they have not. It could be, um, I had laid out some scheduled meetings. And we also talked about an offline unscheduled meeting, you know, not one of their regular business meetings.
Well, I think this is all good discussion. This is what we needed. Uh, I was talking to three different groups and they were all three telling me three different things. I, I felt like we needed all, let's get on the same page here. This application was filed in March. So, so we need to get moving on it. And, and the planning commission, but, but to, to Lee's point, I don't want the planning commission doing a bunch of stuff that the board then a week later says, ah, we don't care about that. I mean, that's just, that's not fair to the planning commission.
You should, you should have done this.
Yeah, right. So I think it would be good for us to get some, uh, and I don't, I'm not saying we should direct the planning commission, but we should at least clue the planning commission into the areas that we are most concerned about. And, and so that when they start to go through it, they'll, they'll understand where we're coming from. Cause some of the things I'm hearing the planning commission meeting was, oh, this, 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 this is going to be approved and that's a done deal. Well, we don't need, you know, we don't need that kind of talk out there. We need to, this is, this is far from a, you know, this is a, what did they, Kenny told me that the, the, the transportation impact analysis is a thousand pages plus sixty more.
Yeah, I have...
There's a lot to be...
I asked somebody once, uh, at one time, and they told me how it sounded. They said, you have an executive summary. The executive summary is that thing.
Exactly. Executive summary of the executive summary. So do we want to, uh, schedule a work session, uh, for our next meeting, Allison?
Quickly do it earlier?
Or, or earlier?
If, if the planning, okay. I think we should probably have our discussion before the next planning commission meeting, discussion, work session, whatever it is. Because I agree with, I think we need to, you know, get our arms around it at least at a, at a higher level, a policy level, and provide that to staff and the planning commission. It almost makes no sense to me to have them have another, you know, session without that.
And the Piedmont Environmental Council is already throwing out a whole bunch of boogeymen out there on this. And so I, I got to deal with those tomorrow night.
Well, one thing that we should do fairly quickly, I think, is, is begin to, to grab off some of the big issues that we're, we are concerned about. I think RSA's role, the water sewer infrastructure, that, we, we need to talk about that a little bit among ourselves and see where that's headed. I mean, I think, I think RSA is going to step up and, and be the...
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to come up with the, uh, we've already made the first stage of, uh, of adding a million gallons per day capacity, which is more than enough to handle this.
So it'd be nice to have a, you know, a, a chart, a single chart with about five bullets on it. Here's what, here's RSA, what RSA is going to do. Roughly speaking, I think the same thing with transportation. I can see it, I can see a bullet, a set of bullets respect to transportation, design standards. I can see a set of bullets with respect to design standards. And, uh, you know, other details in terms of the, the layout that you've described. What about the reservoir? Do we, do we identify some, well, area that it, that is at least in later phases?
These areas are not in, uh, are down, you know, on the mountain run, uh, mine run, a few other places that have, uh, the, the water supplies set.
Those are, those are nonstop. One of those has a hundred and fifty acres.
The fees, uh, I'm not sure that, you know, if, if we're, if we're looking at how much water, how much we want to grow the entire Germana Wilderness area. That's something that, uh, we need to be thinking about in terms of what are we going to do about reservoirs? Because right now, we can handle, uh, this plus quite a bit more, uh, in terms of what we can pull out of the rapid an on a daily basis.
And that's a good example. Do, do we, the Town of Orange did this a few years ago. Do we need that short-term insurance policy for that, that ten-day total drought kind of thing? Do, do we need a fifty acre or a, or a seventy-five acre, whatever it is for that purpose? I, I don't know. I mean, I, you know, maybe we don't, maybe the hundred-year forecast doesn't, uh...
Well, yeah, I, I, again, do we, do we want to do that? Do we want to build that kind of capacity? But the, the three million gallons per day is pretty much based on low flows.
Low flow, right. And so we probably, in that case, we should...
So we definitely need that kind of emergency capability. But the point is, if we want to go beyond, uh, these segments of the Germana Wilderness area and move on the other side of, uh, of Flat Run and some of the, and, and see a lot more in that area, then we're going to end up having to find a, 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 a large scale thing. Or, you know, or, or partner with Culpeper or Spotsy or, uh, looking at, uh, old quarries. I mean, there's just, uh, you know, we end up, we end up having to do something like that. And I think that Kurt, as he was talking about the, the master plan for the county, and, and that's sort of, uh, we've got a little bit of that going there. And the, and the G W A P was driving that, at least that portion.
Sure.
Josh's plan, can it's a meeting on October seventh?
Yes, there.
So, uh, does the board want to meet, uh, try to meet before the planning commission's meeting on the seventh?
I think, I think we need, I'm, I'm not sure how we fit it in, but I, I think we...
Do you have time to advertise for Tuesday the fifth? Or Monday the fourth? But beyond that, we're kind of, we're limited on advertising for farthings.
So Tuesday the fifth, um, does that work or not work for anyone?
That would work for me. I prefer Wednesday, but that's alright. I can, I can make it. I'm missing too many rehearsals as it is.
I can do the fifth. I can do the fourth as well. I mean, do, do you, you want to do like? Well, I can do an evening of the fourth.
Can we do an afternoon?
Or an afternoon?
I can do an afternoon on the fifth.
That's fine with me. I'll do that.
Is that going to be a key?
Good afternoon, same, what, one o'clock?
What are you thinking, Lee?
Yeah, one o'clock, uh, I'll check out nine thirty. I should be out at the dentist by then.
Well, I hope for your sake you are.
If you are, we don't want you to come.
Yeah, one o'clock on the, on the fifth. That's great.
Okay. You can still make rehearsal?
I'll make rehearsal unless we drag it out a long time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Allison, you're going to check with Mr. Crozier or send him an invite or whatever?
I can, yeah.
You say one o'clock?
Yes, one o'clock on, uh, October fifth.
October fifth, one P M.
All right, very good. Thank you, Josh. All right, now we will look back to, uh, item six, which is old business redistricting. Your name is beside that item.
Well, that's unfortunate, but, uh, I'll see what I can do. Fortunately, I, I am able to point to Jim Witt, who's in the audience and is standing before you. He's done some masterful work, uh, in preparing some G I S exhibits. And so the board will recall that we've had some discussion about this. And some of that discussion is, is centered around a, a, a particular proposal that, uh, Mr. Chairman, you put forward and I think, uh, seemed to, to be largely, um, embraced by the board. What we did with that is then we prepared a calendar that is responsive to the state law requirements on getting this all approved by the end of the year. Uh, and we've had a little bit of back and forth, uh, with, with some members about, um, showing voting, uh, locations. And, and then we've also sent the draft off to, uh, Patrick Mountie from, uh, the Regional Commission, R R R C. Uh, he is, uh, available, uh, to participate in this, uh, uh, meeting by Zoom. And he has the experience of, of writing up those meets and bounds type, uh, descriptions that, uh, would be necessary to be part of an adopted ordinance. And when he did that, he came across four, uh, particular, um, areas that, uh, might benefit from a, a little more attention to, to be in compliance with the state law requirements on what those boundaries might need to, to follow. And so he's proposed some adjustments there for the board's consideration and can answer, uh, questions about, you know, why he chose what he chose. So we have sort of that set of issues to look at. We also did reach out to, uh, the, uh, the developer, uh, who controls, uh, the Wilderness Shores, uh, H O A, uh, location. And there is interest or there's, um, general acceptance of the idea of, of making that a polling location, uh, which, which might be more convenient, uh, to, to the folks in District Four, um, on, on that side of the county. So we, um, there's a process to put contracts in place that the, um, General Register Director of Elections works through. And so that would, would follow, uh, to, to kind of pin, pin all that down. So with that, I, I feel like, um, what we could do this evening is, uh, look at those boundary issues, discuss, uh, any of those, um, that you feel necessary. And then also there's the matter of precincts. There, there was some back and forth about how to, to draw those, those lines. We're, we're, we're supposed to roughly divide these, uh, voting districts in, in half. And then we have the complicating, uh, issue of the towns that, um, that get into that a little bit. And I will not try to, um, suggest exactly how to set that out since we have some conflicting, uh, state information about exactly how to do that. But, uh, we may have a, a, a way forward, uh, on the table when we get into that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, we're, we're here to answer questions and work through whichever one of those issues you'd like, like to work through and Jim can put it online.
What, what quick, general question we asked the last time, do we have an answer to? Following the census blocks versus other boundaries? Do we know whether or not, for example, the, uh, the regional commission proposal, just I believe it, doesn't appear to follow the census block boundaries. It, it follows fiscal boundaries. Have we sorted through that to, to know where we stand?
So from what we've seen here, looking at all the data, the census blocks themselves will fit nicely and basically flush with a stream or roadway or otherwise designated municipal boundary. So looking there, even though it looks like it follows a roadway or a stream or what have you, that's still the edge of a census block.
Okay, all right. I, I, I didn't study them all very closely, but I know for instance, this one here does because I, one of my iterations was exactly like that.
Yeah.
So what I would suggest we do is, is, um, first of all, let's look at these four deviations. And I would say, Jim, do you have a problem with, with that one?
You're, you're into detail, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the, I'm on adjustment point. This is between the boundary between, um, District, uh, one and District Two.
Well, I, I, I don't, uh, in, in, in the detailed sense of that adjustment, I'm a little bit concerned that, that, that the regional commission's alignment, uh, gives us, uh, a, a spread of population among the five districts that's not as uniform as I would have hoped it would be. I mean, if you look at their, District One and Two are fairly close to the, the magic number of seventy-two fifty or whatever, forgotten anymore what it was now. But District Four is all, is it almost seventy-five hundred under that proposal? And so I'm a little bit concerned overall. The, the tweaking between District One and Two looks fine. I, I don't see anything that is particularly troublesome there.
District Five is the one that's almost seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, right.
District Four is, is, is actually the smallest.
And that's what I'm saying. If you compare the, just the, the end numbers, it's not as even a distribution as, uh, as you'd like, it seems to me.
I would make one note on that. I think one of the comments we did come out of here with was the notion that if, if we were going to pick one district to be a little bit lower...
That was Mr. Crozier's.
That it should be on District Four so that we can account for future growth better. Cause it will, it will be lopsided after ten years.
Given that most of mine is in, is in Lake of the Woods, which is pretty well-built out. And it's not likely to see the kind of growth that the other districts are slightly seen.
Right, right. So it, you know, even in the previous scenario, it was the largest, but not, not, not by this much. You know, I, I don't, I, I don't think there's a huge difference. I mean, anyone that's along this boundary is going to have to switch districts as well as precincts.
Part, part of the thing that, uh, that I sort of like, uh, there on District Five is he's keeping people in the district that have been there before.
Right.
And I don't move them out to a...
Now you're jumping ahead now. We're not talking about that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I thought we'd do this case by case and, and see, I mean, do you have a problem with it?
I, I, I don't really, no.
I mean, one of the things, the only thing, only pushback against Mountie is I think he would have to put in there along the western boundary of Census Block X, Y, Z. I mean, that would be how he would do the, how he would, how he would do the meets and bounds.
But he also needs to define that in terms of creeks.
I mean, I don't know how to do meets and bounds, but I don't know if that works. Because meets and bounds are, are observable landmarks. Census Blocks are not, you know, most...
Census Blocks are supposed to be...
Well, and as long as a census block is an observable landmark that complies with state code, which I assume it is, but...
And you're, you're saying, you want to...
I don't see how both things could be true, either, either census... Either Census Blocks can be used as the basis or they can't be. Because it's very unusual, you know. So anyway.
I'm saying in the meats and bounds description. And I'm saying using the language in the meats and bounds description. I think you'd need an actual...
Roads and creeks.
So you're basically fine with that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at where people have to travel to vote. And it's a slight improvement either one of those.
So the next one, number two, would be between District Two and District Three.
I might note that Mr. Mountie is available. You just can't see him because we're sharing a screen. But if you want to hear from him as to any of the whys or wherefore, he could serve you.
This pushes the boundary of District Three farther, farther east.
They were all set in a brick church road with true blue. Just change all the population.
Yeah, to keep District Three almost the same, yeah.
Yeah, it's...
They're all good folks.
Yeah, and Brick Church Road is a good example. There are a lot of residences along that road area. They're very small lots. It's sort of a cohesive neighborhood. And this splits it right down the middle by road. I don't know which wouldn't have been my first choice. I don't know that it's catastrophic, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, it happens to, that happens to somebody somewhere. These roads are one of the main things we can use.
Yeah, you know, if you go off of that road a little bit, you're in areas where there's very small populations. And so you're not affecting very many people. Using a church like Brick Church Road, there are a lot of houses along that road. That's the difference. But I, you know, again, presuming, you know, the northwest side of Brick Church Road will go into town somewhere in a boat. And the southeast side has to go to Lightfoot Elementary. That's where the...
Is it Unionville?
Are you talking major district?
Well...
Well, you haven't decided about the precinct. I'm just assuming you go into town.
Yeah, well, but maybe not. They might be going to...
They may have to go to...
Might be going to Unionville.
To Unionville, which is, Unionville, Lightfoot are side by sides.
So the choice is Lightfoot or Unionville, which is not a big difference.
Not a big difference. Yeah, I mean, the only downside is that you're sort of ripping a neighborhood that has been a neighborhood and defined neighborhood for a long time.
Ladies still talk.
They just can't...
They just can't vote.
Can't, being by politics.
They can even drive to vote together.
Took up a mile apart. So I, I mean, do you see any...
Not a great deal.
I mean, it makes for smoother lines. I don't have doubt about that, so.
Well, it goes, Patrick, is meats and bounds. All right, what about... There's so many changes in mind, we can come back. Go on to number three, which is...
Which is the offset of Brick Church Road, which gives to Jim the true blue, Mr. Crozier, the true blue area.
But it does keep twenty as a major boundary, which I think is a good, a good thing.
It also makes five twenty-two more of a boundary also, with town state room.
And that is actually a boundary now. This obviously is in District Two today. And those people, they go to, actually, some of those might go to Mountain Run. They would now read a little bit. Yeah, that...
Okay, is that good for you, Keith?
I can do either one, yeah.
All right, we finally can do it. You're good with that change on your district?
I'm good, I'm good with that change.
Okay.
I needed to ask if Patrick could change any of the precinct boundaries for District Five.
Well, that's really something we have to... You're gonna have to change boundaries because you're no longer gonna have anybody outside. So my assumption is that you still want two precincts.
Yeah, I still want two precincts. But I'm just saying the boundary inside Lake of the Woods.
I don't think he addressed that. We're gonna have to do that. For District One, and I guess Tom, speak to us now about the issue of the towns and whether they should need to be separated precincts.
I think the way the law is written, it's convoluted because they changed parts of the law and didn't address the internal inconsistencies. But there's a state code section that says towns set their precincts. And I do think that the towns should have their own precincts or precincts by what the law currently says.
So for District One, that would mean a third precinct as a practical matter because you don't want the whole rest of the district voting in one place, just like we want everybody voting in one place. So there would be a one west, one east, and then a Gordonsville precinct.
And as you pointed out in email, it also makes a lot of sense so that people aren't getting two different ballots.
Right, the campaign, I mean, the election workers don't have to, you know, make sure they don't hand somebody the wrong ballot. And I would say that for the town of Gordonsville, there's probably a fairly simple fix. We obviously need to talk to Gordonsville about this. But currently, one east is voting at Firehouse. There's also Gordon Barber is there, but they also at one time voted at the Town Hall. So they may want to do their town precinct at the Town Hall. We're just gonna have to find out on that issue. Keith, what are your feelings about District Three? If we separate Orange out as a separate precinct, can everybody else vote at Lightfoot or...
Well, currently it's Unionville, I think, is not.
I mean, Unionville, I'm sorry.
I doubt it. I think you're almost forced to...
Well, third, do we, from what I was told, I don't know. Orange is like way over half of that. It's not a large number in terms of geographical, but...
Do you have some anomalies where there are areas in the skyline, Little Skyline Drive, that are not in the town that then have to go all the way to Unionville to vote? I forget what the town limits are. I'm worried about those fringe areas that just happen to be...
Well, Little Skyline is District One, but that area, yeah. Yeah, well, that's why I asked Keith the question, put him on the hot seat.
Well, I would think, you know, along and wrapped that road is about being that those people could go to Orange to vote versus forcing them to drive around Orange back to Unionville. So if you draw the line, which precinct?
Well, you'd have, they're in the town limits, they'd have to vote one way and everybody else would not.
You would be the same as District One. You would end up in three precincts.
Right.
Well, unless you make everybody, like, unless you make basically two precincts, I mean, have two precincts and they both vote at the Town of Orange, but then that means somebody from out of five twenty-two would have to drive all the way to the town vote.
What does that do in terms of additional polling workers and resources associated with the additional precincts? I can understand that you keep them separate, but...
Yeah, well, it's gonna require, when we add a precinct, obviously, it's gonna require, another set of machines and more workers. Those are not massive expenditures, but...
Technically, the town's supposed to pay for its elections. That's an interesting question, what that means, because normally those were may elections. I don't know if them having their precinct, whether they need to curb those expenses. The code's kind of low later on.
And I really think we need to have the... We probably need to bring the electoral board and the voting registrar into, particularly into Keith's situation. District One is kind of easy to do because Gordonsville is smaller and it sort of makes its own precinct. And then the other two are already there. But District Three is a little bit more of a challenge.
Jim, do you have anything that shows the town boundaries as an overlay versus that area of District Three? Is that a related system anywhere?
Not on paper maps, but I can add one here quickly so you can see it online.
Can you do that? Is that quick? I just wanted to see what...
We will make it quick.
What it does to people that are very close to the town boundary but would not vote in the town.
That's right, sure.
We've moved these around enough now that I'd forgotten how much of an issue that is, if at all.
Especially that northern western sector. That's a long ways to go back to Unionville.
Well, you'd have to come down through the town and then, yeah, that's... There may, the state code changes the way it is, they make a little choice. Unless you have, you know, a precinct in town for people to vote in the town and then a separate one in town for those that are not, in fact, not town residents. But you can do that. There are locations that can be used. Okay, yeah. There are. Look at the north of town there. I didn't see a person. I see, on the west side, you're fine. That's...
Well, it does highlight that there's that, yeah, right there where that arrow is. Those folks are not in town.
So as you go north on fifteen, that off the road to the right, is that the old road to Woodbury? That's just outside the town limits?
While we're figuring that out, I just went back to last year and looked at the presidential election. And in District Three West, there were nine hundred fifty-eight votes. And in District Three East, there were four hundred thirty-one votes.
It's two thirds of the vote.
Does that mean what?
What's that?
You mean the town limits versus the non-town?
Well, no, well, it's the town precinct. The town precinct was nine hundred fifty-eight. And the other was four hundred thirty-one. But in terms of how many of those people were town residents, you don't know.
But you can see that...
That's why I say that we need to get numbers here to really make an informed decision. Kind of rough on Jim to have to do this on the fly here.
Well, it's like you pulled it off. I mean, this tells me that we do need to interact with the registrar in the election.
I mean, this is a new, this requirement about the town is something new. Just went into being this year, so that's why we're having to deal with that.
And is that, that area you're just pointing to, your person that you're given, that's an example of anyone that lives there is gonna be told, potentially to go to Unionville.
Yeah, and also north of there, that votes.
And all in the north.
Does anybody live in that little block?
There are twelve people.
And they're currently in District One, so...
They're currently in District One?
Yes.
Okay, that looks like a little goof. And I probably should just go back to District One.
We wanted to make sure you were okay with that, okay?
Yeah, no, I was a little concerned about that because we've gone through a lot of iterations. But yeah, that should go back to District One if Mr. Marshall doesn't check.
You don't want to have to deal with it until you can build a vote.
What exact area is that in?
I can't see the road. It's all blue up here.
Spicer's Mill.
Spicer's Mill, Rat New Road.
Yeah, okay.
I'd hate to lose those people.
They're good folks. You might have just done it for favor. Go to Barber's Mills. Is that where they work now?
Yeah.
It's a long drive, but...
Well, but that's, everybody's been, you know, voting. I mean, we looked at putting some of those in Keith's district, but, you know, it's just too much pressure from the east. Too much population pressure.
What about the areas north of, along fifteen? What do those census blocks look like population-wise? Like that one, what is, that's probably not huge.
Yeah, this is four, or excuse me, this is six. And this is two.
How many, what's the population?
This one, between these two here, it's six people.
Just six?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So you might be able to go away for just two, Unionville and...
And let me, let's time out a minute here. We've got the central absentee, I mean, we got the central, whatever it's called. People can go into the Town of Orange and vote because it's a catch-all. So any of these people who want to vote can go in and vote early and vote in the Town of Orange. They don't need to drive to Unionville. That's why, I mean, what they told us last time, there were about twenty thousand ballots cast, ten thousand of them are in the central precinct.
Or mail-ins, there we go.
Almost, it's only about half that voted on Election Day.
Right, only half voted on Election Day.
So that made...
Yeah, so it...
That central precinct is completely below the ability to really see what's happening at precinct level because it's all five districts are thrown into one hopper. So you've got all these different precincts, and then you've got the Orange County precinct.
Yeah, so you basically would end up with the Town of Orange precinct and then everybody else is Unionville.
I think differentiation in anything less than the county is not all that important anyway.
Well, except for when you're running for local office. You might be interested then to see how things might last.
They're still gonna be on your, even, I mean, you're not gonna have somebody in other district voting in for a particular candidate. You still got that. But I'm saying, when I'm looking at, you know, whether, if I'm looking at the state or federal elections.
Oh, yeah, doesn't affect that at all.
Well, and two, I don't see moving the precincts there. I mean, the mine run does have some issues with access and parking and things like that, but there really aren't any good alternatives, especially since we've now extended to further west. Yes, sir.
How about the southern side?
So just directly outside the town limits here, this precinct that I have highlighted has zero people.
Zero, or excuse me, census block.
Yeah. This has, this one's quite a large in terms of area and population. This has twenty-six in it here. This has two. This has a hundred. This has a hundred. This has seven.
Those are people that have to come into town and then go. Eight hundred and twenty all the way to. But.
Given the relevant static nature of District five, in ten years, they're gonna have to reach out and grab more spade, more, uh, land.
Anex somebody, right?
That's right.
Okay, so. Is this the one we want to advertise?
So District one would be the only one if we go to three precincts in that precinct, essentially?
Yeah, I, I, I think so, I mean, it would seem that way, because, because that central precinct really does serve as kind of a, a Town of Orange precinct for the people that live close to it. But that's, I mean.
What do you think?
It's kind of a cave, but.
Better off with two or create a third? And I don't know that you.
Where would you put the, where two and Orange would be about a third?
Yeah, you'd have to put, and that would be really confusing.
Yeah.
Two, two voting places in the Town of Orange, one for people that are, that live in the town and one for people that, that don't.
Plus another one for anybody to go vote in.
Right, well, yeah, that's right, you'd end up with three, three voting places in the Town of Orange, that's probably not a good idea.
Well, I guess when you open it up for public comment, you'll hear.
Yeah. Good point.
What really makes the difference?
Well, if we. At what point do we need to make a decision about the, the voting places? Mine Run is an example where it sounds like that it's worth some effort to look for an alternative site. But. You know. If we have to decide tonight, for example.
We don't have to decide tonight, just before we submit to the AG's office, we need to give them the background. And I'm, I'm comfortable with giving the AG alternative precincts and saying, we're, we haven't decided completely to be here or here.
Oh, we can do that, you think?
Oh, well, that's how, that's how we used to do, I mean, nobody's done one to the AG's office before, that's how we used to do to the DOJ. Back when we had to get pre-clearance with the DOJ, we would actually give them, hey, we're considering these three scenarios, do you have any objection to them?
Well, yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather get, get it decided and move forward, but.
So when we, when we, uh, when we advertise for this, the new districts, we don't necessarily need to have the voting places or the precincts in that advertisement?
I think we should in the advertisement say we're contemplating excellent possible locations for precincts, so that citizens know when to think, well, I don't see a precinct anywhere near me or a, well, you know.
So they have a chance to object, okay?
Right, so again, I would put in the ad, alternate, alternative scenarios that we're considering, so that when a citizen looks at the ad in District one or District two, they can say, okay, I'm okay with the polling places.
So. I, I guess if, the only question is really, I mean, District four is, is going to have a considerably revamped, that line is gonna have to be redrawn. Uh, and, and a new voting place down, and Jim, you're gonna need to make a decision on some of the new people that you're getting, where they're gonna vote. I presume they would vote at Mine Run, because that's pretty much where you had of all of them.
Right, yeah, right.
So can they align the same otherwise? Add all the new people in the Mine Run?
Yeah, probably, because I think the ones that are in, on that kind of stake, I think most of them, maybe all of them go to Mine Run now. Even though they live right, right up the road from life, they've heard that complaint.
I'm looking at their, our, our redistricting schedule here, we're supposed to be identifying polling places, uh, by the Board of Supervisors on two twenty.
Okay.
I don't know if that's essential, I mean, I, I just.
We are under compression.
I can link this on Alison.
Um, i- i- if there was a problem you're trying to resolve with Mine Run, uh, one of the other options is that we can enter into some sort of a grant agreement. You know, with them to, if it's safe, fix handicap access or make a, a, a better door or something, I mean, little things. If that, that's what people are complaining about, is the parking and the accessibility, we can do a little bit of.
I mean, I think paving a section of the parking lot is one of, and that's a bigger deal, uh, potentially, so. I, I, I don't know what all the issues are, I'm just going on, uh, what we heard the other night.
Well, I think the, I think the, the precinct boundaries are pretty well set, uh, with the, with the exception of District four. Yeah. I don't know whether that's, because that's, you know.
Is that? What's that, that's taking the boundary?
Do you have the precinct to, or are we going to?
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll use District one to kind of show what, um, we have here, so I have, I have the, the precinct boundaries, uh, that were two thousand, um. You know, set in two thousand and ten, um, and I can filter it out so that I'm gonna show District one as an example. So, the entire, how, the, the, the black outline here, um, the outer boundary is, is basically the entirety of District one as it is currently set in two thousand and ten. Now, we can see here, this, uh, this red section down here is, is, is the new census box that Mr. Johnson's, the district will be gaining. And then we can kind of see the, the, the current precincts here as well, so these folks have just automatically been, in our rendition, assigned to one east, because.
Sure.
Everybody else is gonna stay the same, and only the folks that are switching districts altogether will be in a new voting precinct, if that makes sense. So if we want to look at, um, if we want to look at District two, for example, um, both the blue colors now indicate the entire, uh, proposed district that we're set, that we're, that we're discussing now, um, and then this black, the entirety of the black outline now is, is what District two currently is. So we can see here, um, and what is two west, that it's only, you know, i- it's losing people, because those people being.
You might actually want to move that one, you know.
Well.
Because you got five twenty-two is your boundary, you're losing off one side, you're adding to the other, and one of your precincts is right on that, is right on that line in there. I mean, I don't know, do we have any idea?
Population.
Population of the.
Two precincts.
Between the two, as they're set right now.
Well, as you, no, as you would have.
As your proposal.
As your proposal.
Yeah, as I'm proposing, as proposed right now, um, District two west is, is thirty-two hundred, and District two east is thirty-nine hundred.
So Mine Run would be seven hundred people larger than, than the, than the school. Which could make a bad situation worse, that's why.
Yeah, that's right, you don't want to load up Mine Run.
Yeah.
Trying to think if there's another, other than five twenty-two, there's not really a, a great. Boundary.
Well, the, do the, do the precinct's boundaries have to be, do they have to go along recognized meets and bounds, or they, or no?
No, the voting districts, the precincts, I think that's, that's.
Okay, yeah, well, you need something you can communicate.
Well, we still, we'll start to put a description in our ordinance as to the identity, the location of.
But we could, we don't necessarily have to follow the census blocks.
No, I think the census blocks is for the voting districts.
Yeah, it's for the district, yeah.
Jim, the, the roads aren't marked on this, if you.
I can add up.
If you blow up the section just east of five twenty-two, there, there is a network of roads that. Let me see, east of five twenty-two, that theoretically could become that boundary.
Yeah, let me see if I can add up real quick. How far you want to go with this tonight, you want to try to resolve it or?
Well, I, I resolve it, and, and once we get to something we can resolve, and if we haven't put something off, then there's no point talking about it to midnight.
Anybody have a magic marker of any kind?
Yeah, I've got green and blue.
Uh, not blue, not, uh, yeah, green's not very useful, is it? What I'm thinking. There's a network of roads. Well, it's, it's several. Do you want to step over and see that, see that green, uh, highlighter to? There's a network of roads that could, could define as a precinct boundary that's to the east of, uh, my, to my bounds a little bit.
What, what's that stream?
Ariga Run.
Yeah. Ariga runs into Terry's, runs into Lake Anna.
While we're thinking about this, the, the other thing that, again, Mr. Sherman, you pointed out is with early voting, folks are concerned about crowds, that you have other options.
Just, I did want to clarify, just so it's clear, the precinct still has to have identified boundaries, it still has to have monuments and the creeks and the roads, but, but it doesn't have to match a census block. So, we, we would, we would still be able to have, have to identify it, it's, you know, from this point to this creek.
So you still need meets and bounds even though?
You'll, you'll still need a meets and bounds, although it doesn't have to follow the census.
Yeah, something like I out, out line, Jim, would also make sense, because those are, people could get to five twenty-two to vote at Lightfoot fairly easily in that section and then travel east from there. That might be Tower Road from.
That is Tower.
Yeah, this is. I'm assuming that's what it is, and it, it goes down to, but I don't know if it goes all the way to Tatum or it comes down to Saint Just or, I, I couldn't, that map is small enough, I couldn't tell what was. Let me switch here for quick, just to. See if I can. It's better than the day of bats and scissors. If you could, please, that's all.
Sure.
There's just no potential.
That's actually, first. I think you said what District three had, and that, four. Which district would have the largest percentage of people that do the.
Alison, you were saying that the, sorry, Terry was five percent, would be.
Um, five, five, we said was the range, Tom said ten, Mike he, okay, five percent was the same.
Is that from history? Turned out, it's much higher than five.
Now, five is the safe word, hundred, lots of dirty five, as they say, which means over five, hand a little harder, right?
Is that from the highest to the lowest, or from the, from the, from the average?
I would say from highest to lowest, if you have.
Because we've got, according to this, it's like five point five seven.
So there's a maximum. Yes, that's the maximum deviation, not.
Yeah, I see.
And that's the swing from the highs to the lows.
That's between, between, uh, District four and five.
I didn't, I didn't choose to watch that.
Then there, our average deviation is a lot smaller.
Average deviation is one and a half, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I would round to five, we're around five, I'd say.
I'm, I'm just. Well, I'm just saying, because you've got the argument of, uh, uh, you know, being all of a part of the same community, that.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would go to twelve. I, I'm gonna think the AG's gonna have time to look at it, at least, that's why, and they're being approved after she's carried that over.
So that's right.
Maybe just gonna look for any kind of, uh, uh, inappropriate, uh, charity mandate.
Okay, should we, um, should we button up some of these things outside of the meeting?
Yeah, of course, it looks like you're almost there, Jim. We could, if, if this balances the numbers better, we can, we can go with this. I need one more to switch.
Yeah, I got a couple more.
No pressure, Jim.
No pressure.
You like to silence? He wants us to go off and do something else, eh?
No, it's, it's perfectly fine.
At least everybody in, in, in YouTube land can see what's going on.
You better be clear.
Yeah, well, quicker, quicker than you.
Yes, that's zero.
So the second column, is that the number of voters in each precinct?
Yes, what that is, so.
It's the population in each precinct.
Well, the population, yeah, recopulation.
It's now over them, three hundred instead of seven hundred.
Three west.
Oh, no, no.
Just to keep it fun, put some people on District five and.
Yeah, I'd say that. You know, like that. Two west. Six. Okay, one more.
What are those roads now? It turns out it's Tower and then, and then what is?
Yes, it goes to Tower, and then. Yep, it's Tower.
Yeah.
And then it goes.
Yeah, that's what I'm, what is that one, yeah.
It ranges off there. It's still Tower. And then it goes to Tatum.
Tatum.
Tatum, it's Tower and Tatum, that's not bad.
Tower. Tower, Tatum. Terry's Run. And then, based on your sketch, it goes into, uh, Pink Fields. Yeah, so there's a couple more to change, but these two have zero.
So what did that, I can't read this.
Yeah, let me blow it up.
Helped a little, but not much, you still have five hundred.
Yes. Still five hundred.
Well, not quite, but, you know, four or something. What happens if you cut off the, it's a very southern tip there?
Right here.
You take that and move that into, uh, west. Those people around Lake Anna would, could get to five twenty, get to Lightfoot pretty easily.
There's not a lot of residents there, a lot of homes, but not a lot of residents.
Twenty-one and eleven.
We've got a lot more difference between all the other precincts.
Yeah.
Seventeen, thirteen.
That's thirty.
So be thirty.
Plus twenty-one and eleven, plus sixteen, sixteen.
It said it's the right road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some sixty, seventy range.
I think I'll do that. Okay. All right. So, Tower, Tatum, and Terry's Run, basically, that's definable. All right, let's, okay, you could store that, let's assume for the moment that's what we do, let's take some of the pressure off of Mine Run in a way, which I think is. Let's assume for the moment that's what we do, and take some of the pressure off of Mine Run in a way, which I think is.
Take that old-fashioned television handset out down there, but.
Yes, take this out.
Jim, uh, the precincts that you have on District Five, are those the existing precinct lines?
Yes, sir, they are.
Are they pretty even now?
Well, uh, yeah, because I think that, uh, the the people on the outside, uh, were in the, in the, in the thirty-four hundred, uh. Yeah, that's okay, that's all right. Yeah. That's, yeah, keeps the same voting, uh. People on, uh, on my side of the lake, which is to the south there, uh, have to go around the, around the other side of the lake, but it's still, still got a nice dividing line.
How about three, Jim, is that, you're showing.
That's, that works.
Is that now just the town in one of them, or is that still?
It is not just the town.
Okay, because that was the one that's out of balance substantially, but.
Sure. Oh, there you, that, that's based off of six hundred, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so it is not just the town that currently stands.
So that would be somewhat rea- better balanced for you.
Yeah, I think when, just playing around with it initially, it's, it's still, I think, almost like forty-five hundred people just in the town, and it's.
Right, yeah, they does break.
Yeah.
Okay. And District Four, um. What 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 do those numbers look like, uh? Is.
They're not very well balanced, either twenty-seven and forty-three. No, or is that the new District Four number?
Correct.
Well, I don't think Jim might wanna take part of that, part of the 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 lake that's sticking down there, put that into the west precinct, because they're vote, they're voting.
One of the middle school, or.
Yeah.
Not the, yeah, the middle school, I think.
So it's, it's already, it's in that area, they'd have to drive. Over onto Route Three, it's not terribly far, but it would balance the precinct more.
Yeah, you could split its precinct, split its district along Route Three.
Yeah. Probably could. Let's do it, you know. And, you know, every, everybody who's in that district now is already voting, uh. Let me see what I'm trying to say, there's, there's, there's no more eastern precinct there as as they currently vote.
So it creates a new eastern precinct and keeps the, uh, the other one, which would have previously been as eastern, now is as west, but.
Yeah.
So thirty-six, one twenty, those are our official numbers, huh?
Yes, sir.
Or at least were as of.
Yeah, according to the state adjusted data.
Okay, um, so I guess we need to check with Jim on the, on what he wants to do with with the District Four precinct line? Is anything else outstanding?
Okay, if you wanna see what three looks like, just the town, but I think Jim's about right, it's, you know, it's gonna be.
Yeah, if if you can discern that difference.
Yeah, instead of being thirty-three and fifty-three, it's probably gonna be forty-five and, uh.
According to C.
What's thirty-three and nineteen?
Yeah, oh, that's right, I'm looking right here, should have. Moved my glasses, yeah.
Of course, it's. Move a little bit.
Jim's district is gonna double the size as Canada, did you know that? Next week?
It'll grow a lot, but I'm not sure.
No, I've I've heard that story before. Well, what's our population gonna be in twenty, twenty-thirties, will be a hundred thousand or something?
If you, if you read the two thousand eight comprehensive plan, we were gonna be larger than Albemarle by twenty-twenty-five, that's what the plan is based on.
We we gotta do some serious growing here in the next, uh, three and a half years.
We tilted the ruler.
We needed seventeen new.
Yeah, we need a boundary adjustment.
I'll never forget the number of count, we need seventeen new Lake of the Woods sized developments to get there, to it, that number.
Got one coming up?
You got one in fifty years, we're gonna get seventeen in in four.
So, are we?
Would you like us to to take everything here that that you put forward, bring it to your, to your Tuesday meeting for a final confirmation, and while we're. Between now and then, check in with Mr. Frosier?
Yes, do we, do we know whether he, well, of course we don't, okay, hopefully he'll be at the meeting, but if not, we'll tell him about it.
He said he will be back in town Friday. This Friday.
That's right, okay, we'll, he'll be there then, so.
You know, currently, currently, we're, what, a one percent growth rate? There's about.
Yes.
But if if you factor in a two percent growth rate, by the turn of the century, we'll be over a hundred fifty thousand people.
Two percent a year, yeah.
Two percent a year. But we're currently one, so.
And determine the century's a long way off.
Yeah.
Seventy years, I mean, eighty maybe.
They're compounding two percent for eighty years, it's.
But that's a lot of.
Then could you check with the red programmer about, uh, Mine Run as a voting polling place? And just see if she thinks it's, it can be brought up to standards in a meaningful way, or if you can work for another place. If you mind reaching out to her, we'll do that. There are a couple of other possibilities, that where the forum was the other night, the, right on Route Twenty could be decently accessible, I don't know if it's available, but it's. That area has countless spots, I think.
They'll be meeting with the, uh, Lake of the Woods board on Saturday, and I'll ask them if they wanna keep the same voting places.
Thank you.
And we're gonna check with the Town of Wardensville about where, how they would like to to handle that. All right, and do we have anything else that we need to deal with? Not, do I have a motion?
Some motion, future.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, James, good job.
Thank you.
Cole, can you end the livestream, please?